Seven oh four, according to my computer at least. This is the zoning board of appeals town of Cohasset. On Tuesday, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. And roll call vote sitting as the. Chair Woody Chidick, I'm here, I. Dave McMorris.
Norris placed here, hi.
Charlie Higginson. I, you're here.
Yep, I'm.
Okay, Matt.
Hi, I'm here.
Just going Lee.
Lee Darcey.
And Mike Dickey, okay, so we are now. Open and John Hallen is. Here as the building commissioner of the town. So. You will be able to, you're here and and we'll call on you as as we need. Okay, so we have three active hearings tonight and a bunch of. Requests for continuance and withdrawal, which I'll get to, but we'll handle these in. Order of filing. The first of which is. A special permit filed by Clark Bro- Brewer. To build a bedroom dormer and living room addition. To a single family dwelling at two eighty-five A North Main Street Cohasset. And we've had. Two different hearings in that one, September and October. Is there anybody here? A with the. With new information or or. Cause I mean, Montana, have we received any new information since our October hearing?
No, but Sam Green's hand is up. Would you like me to pull him in?
Sure. That is the, we should say, the. Owner, property owner of this property?
Yes, and Clark too.
Okay.
Hello, thanks for calling me in. Can everyone hear me?
Sure.
Great, and Clark's here as well. Yeah, so just. We actually, we were here for one meeting in September, I recall that October had to be canceled. The new information that has been submitted since we were last here in September were the. New property survey that includes adjacent property buildings as requested, that was submitted in September. Done by Morse Engineering. There was a letter of support filed by one of butter Heather Hummerford at two eighty-five North Main Street. The other butter at two eighty-one. She. Has assured me that she has talked to both John Hallen and Woody Chidick to express her support, and I absolutely take her word on that. So that's the new information from me and just a reminder. What this was was a. A living room addition because the existing living space has below. Seven foot ceilings and I myself am six feet, so that that will be much. Appreciated by me and then a dormer going in upstairs because again, it's a very. Small humble family home that I'm working on, so. That's where we are. Appreciate your time.
Okay. Do we? Clark?
Yeah, do you do you have the the site plan, Clerk Brewer? Do you have the site plan that was submitted?
Well, I've got the original site plan, but I noticed that in the. Write-up of the September meeting, it was, there was a reference to. What what would replace the older fence that divided both properties to eighty-five, twenty-five A, and that would be. Part of a revised plan that was going to be submitted. I don't have that revised plan. You may have submitted it, though.
Well. We submitted a package. The the only thing that we were intending and were asked to submit was a new surveyed. Site plan with the adjacent buildings on it. In terms of the fence, it's been repaired. The one that's on the north side of the property.
Yeah, that fence had been leaning over due to a spruce tree. The spruce tree has been pruned back and the fence has been repaired. It's now in. Good condition. I chatted with the neighbor. We're still working toward what will be a permanent solution for that, but in the meantime. It is a. Level plum fence that's in pretty decent condition.
I don't have the new in in my material.
Was this?
Colleagues.
Was this plan submitted on September twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth?
Should have been.
So it should have been in your last packet, which you.
I've got something from September twenty-seventh, date stinger, yeah. Okay, I. But I don't.
That would be it, the original. Back in August. Or July.
Well, there is a something if I look at from. North Main Street. South. The left, I I see number two eighty-one and a shed. I don't see anything. Well, I do guess I do see two ninety-one, it's.
Would it be helpful if I shared my screen? I do have the.
I mean, I I didn't see that as a. What we're requesting, but it may be, you know, technically.
We definitely did see, I recall seeing the letter from the. Neighboring property. We definitely. Got that in between our meetings. Like you say, I don't see the new site plan in our current packet, but it might have been in the meeting that was canceled, but.
Yeah, it was. It was in the October packet.
Okay, but yeah, and the and the letter.
I don't have it.
Was definitely. Distributed to us, so.
Is the new site plan, the one dated September twenty-fifth?
I, the one I have in my packet is, it looks like there's.
That's right, September twenty-fifth.
Okay, then that that was in the packet that I just picked up, but I. Probably didn't pick up the last one, so I I might have picked up, they might have combined two of my packets, but I have the September twenty-fifth site plan. Which just gives, it doesn't have houses, it gives the edges of two ninety-one, two eighty-one.
You have a beside setbacks, you mean.
The one I have looks to be stamped twenty-sixth. And twenty-seventh, so I don't know what that.
Yes, that that I believe is the most recent one, and that was. That was in the packet I picked up today, but that might have been the October packet.
That wasn't what I expected to see, but. I know I had that one, I thought because our hearing in September was on the twelfth, right? Or fifteenth or something like that.
Yeah, and and at that hearing, we we asked for a revised site plan. To show abutting properties.
But, yep.
And and that's and that's what Morse put together, showing the the two. Adjacent structures, which are. Up towards North Main Street, not adjacent to this addition.
Oh, there's on the shed.
Yeah, the shed is, but. Not the dwellings, yeah. Well, okay, I expect to usually we we get to see the outline of the footprint of the. Abutting properties as opposed to just a. A line with a couple of crosshatches, but. Yeah.
And I'm surprised because, I mean, Morse. Morse submits a lot of plans to us and they generally know what we want.
Yeah, it's it's not quite what we would have accepted. I'm not sure that anything else. I don't think we were waiting for anything else besides a revised site plan. Is that correct? Board?
That's my recollection is I recall it was. We wanted a plan that conformed to the requirements of the. Of the.
Yeah, I I think it ought to be modified. I mean, I don't think it's 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 going to. Impact the outcome. But I think from a standpoint of. What we require and and filings and somebody may go into the files. Five years from now and. Different cast of characters, I'd like to see it done correctly.
Well, it it shows the critical dimensions of both of those adjacent houses. Where they weren't on the previous survey.
Well. I don't know, board, how do you, let's see. What's your opinion? Could we, should we? Request and get a somewhat more comprehensive. Site plan, or is this, does this comport with our requirements?
Well, perhaps, I'm not sure if I remember who drafted the draft decision.
It was me.
Oh, do you think that we need more information before you can finalize your decision? And two, perhaps. We could say that before they they get the final. Decision, they would have turned one in that's fleshed in because we did miss the October meeting, so. If Mike says that he doesn't need any more information. That this isn't critical to his decision, but I do understand, especially. An example is tonight, we're hearing, we're hearing a. A new new special permit that we made a decision on in two thousand nineteen, and so we often go back and look at. You know, the the materials that were were submitted, so I would say that so that we have a picture. If, you know, they could submit it prior to the final decision being rendered.
Yeah, being being filed, you mean, yeah.
But if as long as Mike says that he doesn't need any more information.
No, my my recollection is that we asked for a revised site plan solely because. It did not meet the requirements. Of what a site plan must show. When you file an application, but the, you know, the the abut, you know, the particulars of the abutting buildings. Didn't weigh in on the decision itself.
Right, but I would draw your attention to the site plan G. Requirements, which are boundary lines, names of owners and locations slash dimensions of all buildings, driveways and parking areas. And all immediately adjacent. Properties. This doesn't have that, and so it's it's in that respect, it's Clark, it's not what we. Expect or almost always get. And if we got something like this, we'd probably send it back for a complete picture of the two abutting properties.
Yeah, that's that's a surprise because Morse, like.
I know.
Said, does lots of stuff from front of the planning board and in front of you guys.
Well. Lee pointed out, this isn't what we usually get from Morse.
Right, and. But you're, it sounds like you're also saying that. Based on the information and what's what's being proposed or requested as a special permit that. Sounds like.
It's not going to impact the decision, but it but it would impact our ability to file what I would consider a a full. Set of plans, that's all.
So so you want to make your decision contingent on the plan updated.
I'd be very comfortable.
Driveways and and the full footprint of those adjacent houses.
Sure, whenever that comes in, depending on our decision tonight. You know, whenever that comes in, we would file it accordingly. So it could be two days, it could be two weeks, whatever.
Right, okay, we'll we'll get that done as soon as possible.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, I mean, it's. But Lee or somebody pointed out very, I believe, pointed out very importantly that we frequently go back. Three, four, five, six years into the files and say, what did we? Get and what did we approve and if something is a. You know. Incomplete, it's it's a little hard to. Recreate. Bless somebody.
Yep, thanks.
I hope you're well. Okay, so is there anything else that the board would like to see here? I've got a few edits, but we'll deal with that under our deliberation section. Personally, I didn't see anything that we. Are lacking in terms of information. And that's just me.
Yeah, the thing I think we're tracking was the new site plan and the potential letter from the neighbor and.
Yeah.
We discussed both, I think I'm comfortable. I don't have anything else.
So if we don't have the letter from the neighbor, Clark, you could provide it, but you and Montana could probably.
We did get that, Woody.
We did get that?
I don't know if it's in, I think maybe the two different packets with the meeting being canceled, it might be one.
Yeah, that may be the problem I'm having.
I recall reading it. When it was distributed at least electronically, so.
Yeah, I think I saw it electronically. I'm not sure you have a hard copy, but at any rate. Mike, why, Dicky, why don't you just, you know, make sure that we have those two pieces after we deliberate tonight and. That they're part of the filed. Copy. That's all. I don't think we need to meet again on this.
I agree, and I can. I can coordinate with Montana.
Yeah, that's probably the best thing. So I would make a motion. To close the hearing at two eighty-five A North Main Street. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Charlie Higginson, Woody Chidick, I.
Charlie Higginson, I.
Yep, I'm. Assuming that the.
Sorry, Dave.
Motion to close is on condition that we receive the additional.
Yeah, okay, on on condition that we we received a modified, receive a modified site plan and that. Letter from the butter.
David McMorris, I.
Lee Darcey.
Four.
Mike Dickey, I.
Mike, five.
Matt Watkins, I.
Matt, six, okay, so that's that hearing is closed, we'll deliberate later in this in this meeting.
Thank you for your time.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And. Okay, the second hearing and it's, I'm sure they're kind of in the weight room. As request for a variance filed by Robert and Judith Kaisemeyer for an expansion of a single family house. At thirty-four Stockbridge Street. So this is a variance. Not sure pursuant to eight point seven B is not a variance, it's a special permit section, but. We'll let the representative speak to us about. The filing. Both the accuracy and why. So do we have Montana, somebody representing the Kaisemiers, the Kaisemiers themselves, or?
I just pulled Judy in, I'm going to ask her if there's anyone else she'd like to pull in too, and Christopher.
I recall, Woody, right, we recently had a. A letter on this for requested continuance.
On on the Kaisemiers?
That's what I thought, you know?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes, yes, but but they are on the, but does that apply to tonight's hearing? Or did it apply to October?
Well, maybe I maybe I missed that, I guess we'll find out, so, sorry.
We were on the schedule for October for the meeting that was canceled.
Okay.
Okay. So why don't you introduce yourself and. Tell us. Why you're applying for variance, I'm not, as I mentioned, eight seven B is a special permit. Section, it has nothing to do with variances.
I was surprised to see that listing on the agenda, too. The intent was a special permit under the section quoted.
That's not what the application says.
Okay.
That may, that may have been my fault, I. I honestly thought it was a variance when I was putting all the information on, I may have misunderstood, so I apologize for that. I read it as a variance, so that's the reason why I put it like that.
Well, the application says variance, but.
You're on mute, Woody.
Woody, you're muted. You're you're still muted, Woody.
A phone call. I don't I don't think it's appropriate to meet on a special permit when a variance was filed.
And we changed the word.
Has to be advertised differently.
Trying to recall, Woody, if we.
What, go ahead.
When it's.
Lesser?
It's gone the other way, I I definitely agree, but when it's advertised as a variance and we're seeking. A potential special permit, I.
Well, you make a good point.
We were, but.
Yeah, I I. I spent my. Thinking time trying to figure out why a variance, and I couldn't. For the life of me, see why that was relevant.
It's not relevant, it's a special permit is the intent.
Okay, well, you would agree that that we have a a signed form here. That says variance. Right? It's probably, are you, yeah, you're Christopher, you signed it.
Okay.
And Bob and Judy Kaisemeyer signed it back in eight seventeen, eight nineteen. I don't know, how does the board feel? We could open it up as a special permit.
Charlie Higginson. I think if we advertise for a variance. We're stuck with that advert advertising and. They can change it now and we'll have another hearing on this. Next session. On a special permit.
Yeah, I think there are different. Apparently different issues on these things. I mean, it's it's, I agree with.
Not agree with.
The special permit tests are lesser. Or more. You know, benign than a variance test, but still.
So my name is Chris Diorse, I'm with Campbell Smith Architects and Judy and Rob Kaisemeyer came to us about a year ago. To put an addition on this house. And we submitted the paperwork in. At the end of August. For the October meeting, which was canceled. And I apologize for the inaccuracy of the paperwork, and I understand that it's an important distinction. Between special permit and variance. We are seeking a special permit. And the section quoted, as you point out, relates to the special permit. And we have a non-conforming structure and we're. Adding on to. This non-conforming structure and not making the existing non-conformity any worse. I am hoping that you could let us present at least the project tonight.
Let me ask my colleagues.
Yeah, I would. I would be in favor of letting them present because I think, you know, we can have the application modified after the fact, but. Because it was submitted for something that. You know, is more extreme as far as criteria. You know, and I think. Because it was. Initially submitted. For the October meeting. I would be comfortable with it, but that's just my opinion.
I I would say two things. I I simply don't know if if the board has the jurisdiction. To show any discretion. But if the board does have that discretion. I agree with with Matt, the purpose of the public notice is to get folks with an interest in the application. To the meeting to make their thoughts and feelings and opinions known. Given that a variance is a is is a higher bar. I I I think if anything, publicizing for a variance would get more interested of. Folks out to the to the public meeting to get their feelings, thoughts and opinions on the record, so. I I I think it's difficult for me to feel that any anybody with an interest in this project. Is being disadvantaged by allowing it to proceed again, because if they wouldn't. Show their, if they wouldn't raise their hands, knowing that a variance was was on the table. I I don't see how that they would all of a sudden say that, oh, well. I I I have an interest in in a special permit, given that a special permit is. Is as we all know, less aggressive changes to the, you know, to the neighborhood and structures and all that stuff.
Sure. Dave, how do you feel?
I might pretty much echo everyone else, as long as it's. I don't know what the. The impact of the legal technicality is, but. If they're. Willing to run the risk that it's. Invalid, then I'd say we hear.
I've looked at the application and I can see that the X is marked in the wrong spot. The X should have been one line below at the special permit.
Okay, so it could have been.
Yeah, I mean, the eight seven B is marked on there, which wouldn't exist on a variance.
Yeah, right, there is no such thing as a variance from eight seven B.
Just as a suggestion, Woody, you you might. Take it and deny the variance. And then other relief sought would be the special permit, so that you cover both. Advertizing. And be able to to review it.
Yeah, and I I agree with with the other comments, I haven't. Heard from Charlie per se, Lee, but. Basically, this is, the tests are lesser. And I think John's solution is correct, we would. Very quickly, and I would suggest right now. Seeking a motion in a second to deny the variance, but. Open the hearing based on a special permit as the more appropriate. Form of relief. Is that comfortable with the board, Lee?
Yeah.
Charlie?
Okay.
All right, why don't we do that? I'd I'd make a motion to deny the variance. Application on on. On the Sept- on thirty-four Stockbridge Street. And we will revisit the proper form of relief in a moment. If this passes, so it's, I've made a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, Woody Chidick, I.
Charlie.
Okay, others? Okay, let's run around the room quickly.
Mike, Mike Dickey, I.
Matt Watkins, I.
Okay, so now we have before us. I think a more appropriate form of relief under eight seven B, a special permit. And I would entertain, do we have to, I'm not a parliamentarian, do we have to entertain a motion to accept the new application or the revised?
Don't we just make that a condition of?
Yeah, we basically.
Well, I mean, we're. We'll continue it to next week and they'll have to amend their application.
Yeah, but all right, why don't we just say that we have revised this and are opening a hearing based on three hundred dash eight seven B. Special permit at thirty-four Stockbridge Street and. Turn it over to the. Applicants representative who can explain what, why, and whatever.
Thank you very much for your creative thinking and the problem solving here. I appreciate us. So this is, this is a small building on a very small tight lot on Stockbridge Street. And I can run through the pages that I submitted if I could share my screen, if you think that would be helpful.
Yeah, I mean, deal with the, yeah, yeah, first, we ought to understand what you want to do, and then secondly. Why you feel under eight seven B. That this is an appropriate or whatever, it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, et cetera.
And I'm looking.
Of course, I I think we ought to hear from you what exactly it is you're proposing. I know we have a plan, but I think it would be. Valuable to hear from your, you know, verbally.
Yeah, so if we could enable screen sharing for participants, that would be.
One second.
Yep, thank you. You should be.
Okay, now now we have some photographs.
Right, so this is the.
Want us to see?
Yes, this is the photographs of the existing site in the top left corner, you can see a Google Earth image. Uh, with this little red marker. That is the subject property in question here. And the important thing to note about this property is the deck here on the side. The plan is to enclose a portion of that existing deck as a two-story addition, but I will keep showing you this project. Here's the photos of it as it exists today. You can see this deck. It's on a sloping site. So the first floor is at grade level at the rear of the house, but you see nearly a story above grade level at the front of the house. Which is why you see this lattice work under the porch, which is at the first floor level. Here's the site plan. The blue area would be the expansion of the footprint in a two-story addition. And we would proposing to close in this existing deck as a screen porch with a roof and columns and screen panels. And a, the front entrance would roughly stay where it is now. So you can see the lot is very narrow. It's. Nonconforming at the moment. Um, it's very, very close at the back of the lot line at five point two feet. We're not getting any closer there. It's very, very close on the left-hand side at six point six feet. We're not getting any closer there, but we are adding a second story above this. Existing single-story portion of the house. And on the right-hand side, the existing deck is at eleven feet from the property line. And we're proposing to keep that line at eleven feet and add a two-story addition. So I can show you. The plan. So here in red is the existing footprint of the house, including the deck. And there's a little bump out which will be taken off and a new structure, a new two-story structure added there. The, most of the addition is on the second story, the second floor. So here on the right-hand side, you can see this existing second floor, which is this red rectangle in the sec- in the center. We're adding on a bedroom on the right-hand side and a bedroom on the left-hand side on the second story. Here's an illustration of what is, uh, encroaching on the setback. The pale blue. Is portions of the existing building that are within the setback. The dark blue or purple. Is our proposed addition that would fall within the setback. So this is the front of the house, second-story addition on the left and the right. And this red line outlines the perimeter of the existing house, including the deck that we are filling in. Uh, this is just an illustration showing the basement. It's a essentially a walkout basement, but it doesn't. Um, count as a story because it's mostly below or more than fifty percent below grade. You have the full set of floor plans. And elevations. And here I've shown the setbacks as a frosted glass wall, so you can get an idea. Of how narrow the existing lot is and how the existing house fits in this narrow slot. And what we are doing, we're adding a second floor on the left-hand side and a second floor on the right-hand side. And filling in this deck with a screen porch and roof. So that's a brief overview of the project. I'd be happy to clarify anything or talk about it.
Yeah, that slide you have up now, the existing and proposed and the setback, what what were the totals, um? Um, percentage.
There, yeah, I I'd calculated it earlier at thirty four point four percent increase. It's a considerable, it's a third, it's it's increasing the volume within the setback by a by thirty-three percent. Thirty-four percent, I should say.
Yeah, the house is about fifteen hundred square feet now. We're adding five hundred and seventy-one. Uh, most of that square footage is on the second floor.
How do you address the issue that all these houses in Stockbridge Street, not all, but almost all. Uh, have side rear or whatever, uh, setback nonconformities, but this house is. Kind of remarkable, uh, uh, on the basis that it is. Um, closer to the side lot lines than it's a, uh, either or butter. Closer to the rear lot line than either or butter. So on and so forth. So it's it's a very nonconforming house, even in a nonconforming, uh, neighborhood. Um, and you're proposing to add another third within the setback, third volume.
The only explanation I can say is it's a sloping lot, so the the lower end of the lot where the driveway is is in the flood zone. So they pushed the house up toward the back of the lot to get it up above, you know, potential flood. It was built in eighteen eighty-three. Um. And the the bottleneck here at the, the narrowest portion of the property line here. Near the front of the house is about twenty-nine feet.
Mm-hmm, and the lot width itself is forty-two feet. By the way, measured by the, uh, uh, dwelling. That's how you do it, right? So.
Well, this, I mean, the long line looks like eighty-nine back here. Is that, yeah, eighty-nine feet here. Forty-four feet, the length of the, the length of the widest portion is eighty-nine, and at the street it's forty.
Yeah, and lot width is measured at the front of a house.
Mm-hmm.
By and large, um. So, speak to us. Why isn't this more detrimental to an already crowded neighborhood when it is the most nonconforming? At least more nonconforming than its immediate neighbors and, um, you're going to make it more nonconforming.
There is an existing deck that we are treating as existing structure. And that deck is there, uh, let's see. Here, and we are proposing to infill it with a two-story addition and a screen porch. On the left-hand side, there's a single-story addition that was done in approximately nineteen sixty that we are adding a second floor to.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and I agree. I mean, you're converting a what's. Known in our bylaws as a structure because it's not, doesn't have a roof into a building. And, um, that's a question of massing, that's all. I mean, I'll I'll let other people. Pick away, but, um. I I come back to the fact, this is a, not just a nonconforming house, but a more nonconforming house than. Um, many of its, uh, neighbors, if not all its neighbors, and. You're going to exacerbate the nonconformity.
I have a question. Um, one of the side setbacks is currently conforming, but under the proposed. Um, construction, it will no longer be conforming.
Which is that, Dave?
Side setback number one is going from sixteen point two feet to eleven feet.
Ah, they're creating a nonconformity, you mean? It's a conforming structure that becomes nonconforming in a nonconforming building. On that side of it, right? You're talking about the deck. Dave, is that correct?
Yeah. I think so. I've been looking at the application. That's what the application says and it's what the dimensional. Um, material on on that site.
You're looking at side setback number one, which is sixteen point two feet that goes to eleven. Is that correct?
That's the one.
Yeah, sixteen point two here, did that? Did that sixteen point two? I see that there, right? So is that?
That's sixteen point two is to, uh, to the existing.
House?
Single sto- yes, to the existing single-story. There's a little pantry bump out right there. The deck is at eleven, which would stay at eleven.
But the deck is a deck. It doesn't have a roof on it. It's it's not even, it's not even a one-story deck. And now it becomes a two-story. Extension of the building. I don't. What about other people? Charlie, where are you on this?
Uh, I I agree with you. That's a problem. I I'm having troubles on the deck. On the, uh, north side of that house, uh, opposite the pantry. Is there something there now or is, uh, or is that new? If it's new, then we're going back to a variance.
There's this little, you can just see it in this fuzzy satellite. There's this little existing bump right there.
Now, what happens to the? Uh, is there a deck next to that or is it ground level, uh, nothing? And you're planning to put, uh, a, uh, cover that all over?
Yeah, you can just sort of see the outline of the the deck and here.
Yeah.
That's the line that we were hoping to continue the nonconformity on.
Okay, and how about just beyond that going, I guess, northwest?
Right there, it looks like dirt.
And it will remain dirt or is it going to be part of the deck?
No, that's part of the new addition.
So isn't that new area being covered?
So you're talking about this little rectangle here.
Yeah. You see, the red line shows the existing.
Mm-hmm.
So, and nothing existed there the way I saw it.
It's getting no closer than the current deck structure. It's extending.
It's extending it.
Ending it, the nonconformity, but it's getting no closer than.
But for clarity, if I was following it, right, the existing nonconformity currently is measured to. The back of that bump out structure and not to the deck. Would that be accurate?
Uh, the sixteen point, not sixteen point two goes to the corner of this little bump out, yes.
Yeah, okay, I see it.
Okay, but according to your red line and everything and the picture that you just showed us, that little square. Doesn't have anything, that that isn't a deck. That is dirt.
Yes, right, right here.
Right there, currently, right now, so it's not a deck.
Correct.
So you are increasing the nonconformity because that is your sixteen and there isn't a deck there. Now you're pushing the, um, extra five feet out there.
Four feet nine, yes. So the intention was to get no closer, but, um, yeah, to, I I understand what you're saying.
And that would increase the building's structure. Uh, percentage probably beyond what is allowable in that area, district.
Yeah, it seems. You you may be, you may be, um. Whether it's sixteen or eleven feet on the side and and five feet or whatever at the rear, um, or or more, nine. Feet, I guess it is. Uh, the fact is, I think there's a lot of, uh, volume slash massing increase in the. Um, within the setback. It's an exacerbation of, uh. Setbacks and certainly the deck, we would. Not always consider, uh, an intrusion into the setback, I probably would, but it's. It's not a building. It doesn't have a roof and now it's not only going to have a roof, it's going to have two stories. Back as well as side.
Can I just, can we, can I ask you a question about the left-hand side? Does this left-hand side? Raise any concerns with the board? Are we really primarily concerned with the other side at this point?
Well, I'm trying to, I don't, uh, I'm looking at your hard copy, uh, but I'm trying to see a. Oh, and you're going up as well, but, um. You don't show anything on that plan in blue, so the existing dwelling's footprint does not change on the westerly side, right, or?
Uh, no, the footprint doesn't change, but it's adding to volume with a second story addition.
That's also a concern. Because it's already nonconforming.
Yeah, that's going to add some volume in the side, but that's, you know, that's what we're generally dealing with in these, these applications.
So you can see here, this is a. The a virtual slice following the setback line, the side setback line. And here's the existing first floor, single-story addition, and we are putting a s- a second floor over about half of it. And that second floor has an incursion into the setback.
Yeah, you're not, you're not going further, but you're going, well, from a ladder. You're going further up.
Up, yes.
I have another question on the right-hand side. That existing deck. I don't think we would normally count that in the lot coverage because it does have a roof.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I'm curious as to how you can go from twenty-nine point two percent. And just go up point eight percent by covering all that area.
And the reason is that the the existing deck allows water to. Go through. I mean, it doesn't cover, if if, you know, I mean, if it were a concrete deck or some darn thing. That would be different, but now you're making this impermeable. So whatever the coverage is, it's it's lesser, I think, to Dave's point, probably today. By quite a bit than it would be tomorrow. And yes, you can make it thirty percent by taking out some asphalt and. That's fine. I mean, that's. I'm inclined to buy the thirty percent, um, but to, but really is, I don't think. The existing lot coverage is probably twenty-nine point two percent.
Sorry to interrupt really quickly, but there was an anonymous attendee that has a comment from the panel. Would you like me to read it?
Who's this?
Um, it's an anonymous attendee who is a neighbor and they, uh, sent.
Well, why don't we, why don't we hold on that until we can, um, finish, you know, at least round one with. With the architect, okay? I mean, I I don't want to interrupt our. Train of thought or deliberation here, well, not deliberation, but investigation.
I mean, I'm troubled, I think, by the engineering. Um. Is the twenty-nine point two percent lot coverage is accurate? And we're now going to cover over the deck and continue that. Nonconforming line all the way back. I, I I can't believe that the. Proposed lot coverage is going to be thirty percent or less.
Right.
Wrong in the engineering.
One, one of those two metrics is wrong. It's either not twenty-nine percent or, or it's not, um. Thirty percent.
I think that, so, um, the engineer is obviously not on tonight, but if I could try to interpret where this. Number would come from. If the deck was included in the coverage, the expansion from twenty-nine to thirty. the expansion from twenty nine to thirty would be accounted for by this rectangle that we you were concerned with earlier, right here. So that is the increase in the coverage minus the coverage of this driveway or walkway. So it's it's very close to the a net even, you know, from twenty nine point two to thirty.
But Dave is right. The the deck wouldn't count in terms of existing coverage.
Okay.
And and the application, well, the application's got to be rewritten anyway. And 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 the factors have to be accurate. We're not going to accept or include anything as long as there's some sort of a question mark over the accuracy of the numbers. But still, we're we're here kind of conceptually trying to understand and
So when you say the application has to be rewritten, you're talking about the checkbox between variance and special permit?
As well as the section eight area regulations, as Dave says, uh, something's wrong. Either the present coverage is not twenty nine point two feet or the proposed coverage is not thirty point zero feet. One of those numbers is wrong.
Okay.
We're not going to measure it tonight, but it's going to be corrected by a registered engineer. And it's got to be. The application has to be accurate.
And and while they're at it, they should correct that uh, proposed the existing setback of sixteen point two. Correct that to show that it's eleven, if it, you know, indeed, tech is the where it's being measured from. Otherwise, you're creating a new nonconformity. You see what I mean?
Yes, I understand. Yeah.
Okay.
You're you're saying the the deck issue has more to do with coverage than it does with setback. Dave, is that correct?
Yes, I I mean, I, looking at the plan, I I'm pretty well convinced that the mistake on the setback is in the existing. Not in the proposed. Um, but as to the lot coverage, I'm we we have to have more information to know what's right, what's wrong.
Hi.
So I'm I'm pretty sure that the 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 total after the the proposed total is thirty percent. But the real question is, are we really at twenty nine point two? Is that the concern? The existing coverage?
Exactly.
And and if that's the case, if you are at thirty, we'll need to see some calculations as to what new is being covered and what old is being removed.
Because I don't, we don't have the dimensions of the removal of the asphalt. I understand what you're doing and you can do it and it's perfectly fine. But we need to have, we are removing, you know, X square feet of existing impervious material and we're adding Y square feet of uh, you know, impervious uh, building.
Got it.
Yeah, I mean, winner, I don't think we're questioning the fact that you could get to thirty percent. You get to twenty percent, you get to ten percent if you took the entire driveway out. We're not advocating that, but I mean, that's your, I mean, you can you can do that. Um, and and comply with the thirty percent, but I'd like to know what you're removing so that somebody, and maybe it's a future owner, doesn't come in and try to restore something that was not permitted here. I'm more concerned about the ma- the increase in massing and the fact that these houses are all, I mean, this was a fisherman's street Stockbridge. You know, it was uh, not just fishermen, but they were um largely uh, immigrants uh, coming in and they, there were no, no such thing as zoning and they built houses where they could and and well and good. They're all uh, protected grandfathered legal uh, when they were built or as they are now, but it's the massing. This is an unusually crowded little area. I mean, I mean, you know, it's uh, Yeah, so Woody's point, I mean. Back in eighteen eighty, but.
Yeah, I think to Woody's point, right? So as the board would rule on an eight point seven B, we would need the applicant to you know, demonstrate to us that it's not um you know, substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I think the board generally has some to- some tolerance for uh, increases within the setback increases of facade. But we also like, we look at the neighborhood as a whole. You know, you could take a look at a couple of the lots over there, kind of see how your lot compares to that lot. You could take a look at you know, trying to trying to um you know, I'm not sure if these plans have been, and we haven't opened the public comment, but I'm not sure if these plans have been shared with neighbors, if there's neighbors that have any feedback on your plan um. You know, anything that would you know, help to present your case as to why it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood because just you know, when we deal with massing and, you know, adding a third to um a structure. That's a big component. Obviously, it's really the, almost the sole component of eight point seven B, so you know, we would continue the meeting anyways, but I would just say that that that's a little bit of feedback in regards to that.
I think, yeah, maybe to Matt's point, some sort of neighborhood survey. I mean, it's a uh, you know, a lot of the houses in Stockbridge, particularly the ones on the other side of Stockbridge Street are, you know, have a pretty decent setbacks. Nothing's perfect, but and yes, the side that this is on, number thirty four is you know, tucked in there pretty closely, but uh, I don't want to, we're not bound, by the way, uh, in terms of precedent, everything is treated as unique when it comes for the zoning board, but nevertheless, um, I'm at least sitting here tonight thinking out loud that I'm reluctant to increase the most nonconforming house in the street or one of the most. I mean, there is this um kind of probably a former barn where Stockbridge Street hangs a corner uh, off to the uh, right hand side of this picture. That's pretty damn close to the everything, but um, I'm reluctant to take a nonconforming house that is unusual, make it more nonconforming. That's all. I I'm not drawing a distinction, a decision, but I'd like to understand.
I think Judy is on, and I think she's gotten some feedback, as I understand it, from the neighbors. Judy, I don't know if you're able to jump in here and say if you've gotten anything back from the butters or the neighbors?
On mute. Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Rob is here also. Um, yes, we have neighbors uh, who were walking by. They said they were one of the sixty people who received a letter. And they said, we love what you're doing. It's perfect. Um. That's about it.
We don't have any. We don't have a detailed survey or anything like that. Anecdotally.
But just to say, what we're building on is the current footprint of the house. We're asking for three feet on the side of the shed that currently exists and to cover the uh screen porch. And as uh, we were listening to this, if the concern is permeable space, we are perfectly happy to put pavers in the driveway that are permeable and just get rid of the asphalt. We can put in one of those driveways that are the uh, the actual open, whatever those things are that look like bricks, but the grass grows up in the middle of them. If that's, if permeable space is the issue, the driveway is gone.
Well, your engineer would have to tell you that. I mean, I I'm getting the sense, Judy, from the board that it's not the uh, proposed lot coverage. What's probably an error is the uh, existing lot coverage is probably less than uh, it appears in the application, but I I'm, you know, but we're not going to accept a kind of a visual um guesstimate here. I think somebody's got to measure it, but it probably isn't lot coverage. I think it's probably massing in the in the setback, increased massing.
I hear you. And so I would like to point out also that number thirty six in eighteen eighty built this house for his mother. So to your point, the history of this place and who these people are, it is what it is.
Oh, yeah.
And you know, thirty six expanded a couple of years ago, maybe ten years ago. Um, twenty eight has looked the way it is for many years. Um. What you know, in closing a deck, we are all on a hill. This house, whatever we do is looking into the backyards of our neighbors. The impact on the neighbors is negligible. Elm Court is quite a bit higher than we are on the hill. Uh, the impact is negligible to our neighbors visually.
But anyways.
Mm hmm. I I don't think I would argue that point. Well, we've uh, mentioned a couple of things, board, that we want to see changed, but um some of this is not going to be statistical as much as impressionistic uh. The fact that we typically don't allow this much of an increase in massing regardless of where it is. Could be here, North Main Street or somewhere near Situate, but.
Um, I have a question. Um, is there any place that states where that, well, how much the increase in the facades are?
Yeah, page two.
Page two of the one
Do we have it in front of us here?
Yes, area of elevation within setback, existing and proposed, front, rear, right and left.
The increase in the facades.
And so that uh, gross floor area area of ele- yes. If this word elevation was changed to facade, I think it would be clearer. This is the facade. So that's the um.
Wait, where's the facade? Where's the increase? Where's the increase in the facades of the?
Right here.
That's the increase.
Oh, on the front, we're going from one fifty six to three forty three.
Okay.
And that's, let me show you the drawing.
Probably averaging a double, at least a double increase in the facade, correct? Maybe probably more.
Left side, it's tripled. On the left side, it's tripled from one oh one to three ninety. Actually, that's almost quadrupled.
Yeah. You're right. I hadn't thought of that as um sad, but that's good to know. If that is indeed a substitute for looking for the hard copy, uh, can can you go back to that? You say increase in elevation table that you have? Ah, there you go. Um. Oh, it's not a one one to three ninety. Okay, so then it goes uh.
I just did the totals.
Yeah.
The existing elevation within the setback is one thousand ninety eight. And the proposed is two thousand twenty three.
Two thousand zero twenty three?
Two zero two three.
Okay, so it's uh, you know, for all intents and purposes, half. I mean, it's uh, I mean, fifty percent, a hundred percent increase. Yeah, we have be hard pressed to think about the number of times we've ever approved anything like that.
Yeah, like I mentioned, I think the board's demonstrated like we have some tolerance for those, but not to that.
Not to that extent. That's an eighty four percent increase. A bit of a a mere doubling of the facade.
Um, can I ask you something? Please.
Sure.
Since the first floor isn't changing and the second floor is changing, are you including the screen porch in the increase in the facade?
Yes.
So if we eliminated this green porch and left that as an open space, would that help?
It would help. Would it help enough? I mean, I couldn't tell you until we saw the, both the rendering and the statistics.
Is there an issue with taking that little shed that currently exists out closer to the property line by three feet? Is that a problem?
I don't. I mean, I
No, I I that's not really a problem.
Okay.
So so this illustration is the, I think, is intended to be a clear illustration of where we're increasing the area of facade.
No, I I like the renderings, by the way. I mean, I I think it's very easy, easier than we typically get to follow what's going on. So I I give you thumbs up on that side of it. Go ahead.
So um, sort of picking up what Judy was just saying, if you look here in the right elevation and we have the word screen porch, right? If we were to imagine this dark purple area being reduced to only where there's siding, so that would clearly be an improvement. But you're right, Woody, we wouldn't know until we did, we did the
Have to run the numbers. I mean, I I don't want to. And I, goodness knows, I don't want, I think the board would um, try to restrain me if I felt otherwise. I don't want to get be a design review board, if you know what I mean.
I appreciate that.
We're not trained architects and you you don't want our um our aesthetic uh um, values uh, coming in here as much as uh, we really do have bylaws for us. So it's it's not, I we're not being negative, but we're not being positive either. I I think it's a wait and see kind of proposition.
Am I correct in this in understanding that there is no magic formula? There's no number that you're looking?
That's right. There is no magic formula, but as Matt was pointing out, we have typically um gone under fifty percent. Fifty percent the increase in facade or volume gives us uh, real problems. And then it's it's a question of the impact in the neighborhood and how congested it is, et cetera, et cetera. If this were out in the woods, there probably would be a different evaluation than if it were in a crowded neighborhood, but I you know, um.
I think it's it's fair to say that the more crowded the neighborhood is, the lower the numbers should probably be.
Yeah.
And then you're obviously challenged with if you have one of the more narrow lots in a neighborhood, you know, unfortunately, that makes it tougher to look at the na- because we we don't look at the neighborhood just as the two houses on the left and right. Sometimes, you know, we take a look at the neighborhood as a whole for better or worse as well, you know.
And in this case, Stockbridge is a is a better defined neighborhood than many parts of town. I mean, it it is it is a neighborhood and and um, I I would agree that you go way up on Elm Court and things. That's a different kettle of fish, but um, you've got enough houses and structures here to constitute a neighborhood, no question. Constitute a neighborhood, no question. I would suggest you. Want to tumble some numbers, not just to make any corrections that are needed. But to think about issues of facade and massing and the relativity of this. Building to its uh to its neighborhood. And um. Come back and and uh tell us what you think you might be able to live with and what you can't live with and. If there are any, you know, any components that you change, you don't have to. I mean, you can. Stay with what you have and and see where we come out, but. I'm getting a sense that the board would like to see some modification. Without being too prescriptive.
I'm getting the sense, and you can tell me if I'm misreading it, but the primary concern is on this side of the building where the porch is and where this. Existing deck was and the little bump out and less concerning is the second floor addition above the existing first floor.
Well, we haven't really dwelled in that. I I would defer to my colleagues here because, you know, there isn't much of a setback over here. Part of it's eight feet.
In in the next door. Home is about the same, so it's you essentially have the required setback. Half of the required setback between those two houses.
Dave, could you say that a little louder? I didn't quite get all that.
Um, it from the site plan, it looks like the neighbor, the distance between the neighbor's house and that. Existing corner of this house is about seventeen feet.
Yeah.
So you essentially have between those two houses about half of the required total setback.
And I would just point out that the second story addition does not go to that corner. It only goes about halfway along that wall that's listed as twenty two point nine.
Okay. So.
Maybe. We could continue this and um the applicant can work with John Hallen to um. To make some. Proposed changes.
Yeah, I I. We could at least see Plan A, Plan B, and Plan A may be what we have in front of us, but um. Or Plan C. I I mean, you know, yeah, but.
Because I feel like we're being asked for more input than. Then the board can give.
Yeah, or should give.
Or should give at this point in time.
Yeah.
I appreciate that, but I would also like to point out. That we are working within the current footprint. Of the existing house. Except for. That little square of three feet by eight feet.
I know, but going up is is. Almost or or as much concern, I would say, as going out. In in many in many situations. And if you why we're dealing with volume and facade. Or talking about it at any rate here.
I appreciate that. When you look at where the house is situated on the lot and. In relation to the houses on either side. We are. Farther uphill. In one sense, but. On one side, the house is farther up the hill, and the other side house is farther down the hill. What we're trying to do. Is where their backyards are. We're not looking into their bedrooms. We're staying within the footprint of the house. And we're trying to just add two small bedrooms to the top floor. That's all we're trying to do.
Yeah, I would just add, you know, to Lee's point, I think we've probably given you. More feedback than we typically give on an application. So we our standard practice would be to continue. The hearing until next month. And you would have a choice, you know, work with your project team to see if it's sensible to bring back the same proposal. And have us rule on it, or if you think it's a better idea to make modifications. And come in with a revised proposal for us to take a look at. But that would be, you know, the next step.
Can you give me an idea of what kind of volume? Change you're looking for?
Can't really at this point.
I mean, our our test is really going to be, is it more detrimental to the neighborhood? So that's kind of what this board will be tasked with.
And what is its visual impact on the neighborhood going to be? And until. You know, I I think you can always, uh, as Lee suggested, uh, informally talk to John. He can't tell you. He can't give you a thumbs up or thumbs down, but he can. Suggest or react to certain proposals in a way that we are not going to be. You know, helping you design this. You don't mind, do you, John?
Uh, no, we we get. Quite a bit in in the office with those similar questions in time aside, so that that's appropriate.
So, yeah, he'd be your first stop and uh. As I say, there's no, he doesn't have a vote up or down, but I think he could. You know. In the metaphorical way, I tell you if you're getting warmer or not. And uh you could go from there.
And then Woody would just want to take any public comment to.
Yeah, is there out there, Montana?
Yes, there is one comment. It's from an anonymous panelist. It states, we are neighbors and are concerned about this project among others concerned. This could have a material impact to the privacy of the adjacent neighbors. Our understanding is also that there has been some deterioration and erosion in the hill behind the house. Would this work exasperate those issues?
Yeah, the last.
Behind the house has been taken care of by Brendan Saint John. Welcome to drive by and look at it. He has put in four story. Um, stone structure.
It's not on our property.
It's not on our property. It is owned by and paid for by the two abutters.
Okay, John, would you just do a swing by sometime between and that now and next month and? Just confirm that it's fine, you know.
Sure.
It's a legitimate concern, but if it's on somebody else's property, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, that's. You know, not not before us, but um.
Monty has been out to look at it. She knows what we're talking about.
Okay.
Um, Brendan Saint John is taking care of it, and the two of us were responsible for it.
Okay, well, I'd make a motion to continue this hearing until. Um, let me see, what does it say? Uh, December? Now, what is our our December date, Montana?
Oh, I think it is.
December fifth.
December fifth. Uh, I'd make a motion to continue this hearing uh for new submittals uh. Possibly uh on December fifth. Uh, go up a second.
Second.
Move and seconded, Woody Chitikai.
Dave McMorris, sir.
Charlie Higgins, aye.
Charlie's in, okay.
Lee Darcy.
Uh, Michael Dickey, aye.
And Matt.
Matt Watkins, aye.
Okay, so we'll move and continue this hearing until December fifth and um it'll be posted and we'll have. I'm sure dispensed with two fifty, two eighty five A, so you'd be first up. Uh, first up in the uh hearing. As far as I can see, so. Okay.
Woody, what have we asked them to do exactly? Uh, for example, uh, I think they meant to uh reconsider the uh measurement of the coverage. And I just wanted to remind them that that also includes the masonry walls on the uh rear and left side.
Right, any any uh. Um, manmade uh wall. Um, masonry structure, Charlie's right, so. Let's be sure that sure it's done. Correctly, but you know, you've got our bylaws. You can read the definition, but make sure that the engineer understand. They ought to understand because they do work. Uh, in here in town, but um sometimes they may get confused between town A and town B. I don't know. Good point, Charlie, as well as uh these issues of facade and massing and things of that sort, volume.
Sorry to interrupt, but Christopher has his hand raised. Would you like me to submit?
Who's this?
Look like Christopher, but Chris, I was just in.
Christopher. Oh, oh, you mean the person from the um um architectural firm?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead.
I I got bumped off before you had finished your discussion, but I just wanted to reiterate that, yes, we will uh meet with Mr. Hamlin. We will uh go back to our civil engineer and have him do some more uh aggressive calculation. And put some more information on that site plan, and we will also uh look at um design modifications.
Right. Perfect.
So thank you very much for uh your time.
Okay, no problem. So we've moved and continued that, and we will see you in a well, less than a month, actually. A few weeks. Um, if for some reason you couldn't get ready, I mean, you obviously could file for a continuance, but you probably can. I mean, we're talking tweaking here. Not a lot of time, I'm sure. Okay, we have a a few agenda items, um and then uh we will come to a. Um, special permit, which is a new filing. Uh, the first of which are are three requests for continuance, all of which are on Black Horse Lane. But we'll vote in these uh individually. We've received a request from the applicant to continue. Um, technically till next month, but these have been continued, as we all know, for almost two years. Um, ninety four Black Horse Lane Lot D, uh, I'd make a motion to uh. Accept the applicant's request for continuance.
Second.
Move and seconded, Woody Chitikai.
Charlie Higgins, aye.
All right, um, the next is an appeal um for ninety four Black Horse Lane Lot E. I would make a motion that we.
Woody, just a quick question. So are we're gonna just keep continuing? These inevitably or or?
I don't know. That's the point, John. I mean, what is the story? I I thought we were back in the beginning of the summer kind of uh. Reaching uh resolution point.
Actually, they're in front of the planning board again tomorrow uh uh in executive session. Uh, so they seem to be getting closer uh to. A decision, um, so I'm hoping to hear here soon. They have been, as they say, they have they have made some modifications. They are. Actively speaking with the planning board. Um, I think this is their third or fourth meeting, so um. We'll just uh, I think that's what they're waiting for to get that, hopefully get it resolved with the planning board.
Can you give us just a a a hint? Are they applying for a common driveway or are they applying for a subdivision?
Subdivision control. Yeah, with another, uh, yep, so they did uh they did use that method.
Good, okay, so at least they're not going down a rabbit hole there. They're just a waste of everybody's time.
Nope, they have, uh, they've been uh been through the fire department, building department, and you know, made some of the suggested changes that. That were requested of them. And again, now they're uh back in front of the planning board and. Again, the changes are going back and forth, so there there seems to be a working dialogue going back.
Good, good. Okay, so Matt, that's okay by you then?
Yeah, yep.
Okay, so the the motion's been made to continue uh the hearing on ninety four Black Horse Lane Lot E until December fifth.
Seconded.
Move and seconded, all in favor? Woody Chitikai?
Aye.
Okay, everybody's.
Aye.
All right. Good. The third request for continuance is make a motion to continue ninety four Black Horse Lane Lot seven A at the request of the applicant. So that motion's been made. Seconded? Seconded. Pilling me out here. Okay, um, move and seconded, Woody Chitikai.
Charlie Higgins, aye.
What was that?
Lee Darcy.
Michael Dickey, aye.
Matt Watkins, aye.
Okay, so that's been um um voted on um unanimously. And the um fourth uh request without a a hearing tonight is on four eighty eight Jerusalem Road uh. There was a a variance um and the request for withdrawal. Was submitted by the applicant's attorney um. I don't know what the background is in that. John, are we likely, by the way, to see that coming back to us, or is this a? Uh, over?
Uh, no, I think this this denial is is over. Um, they. Did apply for a permit in a different area that was within the guidelines, but uh so that permit was issued, but uh this one wasn't.
Okay. Very good, so I'd make a motion to accept the applicant's request for eighty eight Jerusalem Road to withdraw. The variance request and appeal.
Seconded.
Okay, move and seconded, Woody Chitikai.
Charlie Higgins, aye.
And Morris, sir.
Lee Darcy.
Uh, Mike Dickey, aye.
Matt Watkins, aye.
So the next hearing is one that I have to recuse myself on, as I did four years ago. Uh, it is uh fifteen Brook Street. Um, filed by Brendan Sullivan to raise a barn and replace it with a single family home. I'm going to turn it over to um Dave McMorris is is our vice chair. And I will um not only mute myself, but blank myself out. And when you're ready to come back, we can um talk minutes and um. Anyway, meeting dates or anything uh. Kind of housekeeping, but. I will now uh turn it over uh to Dave McMorris, so I will be.
Thanks, Woody. All right, so. Let's um bring up fifteen Brook Street, which is. An application. For a special permit under section nine point one one. So, Montana, who do we have presenting?
I'm pulling in Brendan Sullivan right now, and then. I will see who else you'd like me to bring in.
Yep, good evening. Uh, Brendan Sullivan with uh Maryland Geners.
Brendan.
Uh, here representing um Jim Norton of um Young Bel- Young Belford LLC, the owners of fifteen Brook Street. Um. I can pull up a plan.
Brendan, can you? I I know this is the. Single family structure in the the garage, but. I understand it's under village business. It's in the Village Business District.
Yes.
And most of this is going to a planning board, I understand.
Yes, yep, room for our planning board tomorrow night.
Okay, so can you kind of run this through with particular attention to the pieces that are in our jurisdiction?
Sure, absolutely.
Thanks.
Um. I'll be uh I'll be brief. It's fairly simple. I think most of you've seen this uh application back in two thousand nineteen. Um, so the existing um building is the office building in front at fifteen Brook Street. It's the old uh Charlie Humphries uh structure, if you're familiar with that. Uh, we're focusing on the barn in the back. We're changing the barn to a uh a single family home. Um, the sewer line that goes through the middle of the property, uh, James Brook runs to the south of the property. Um. So that's really the existing conditions, proposed conditions. Uh, we're peeling back some of the gravel parking area. Uh, I'm sorry, so the elevation AE nine uh. With respect to the floodplain, um, it runs runs between the the existing barn and the uh the office building in the front. Uh, so that's delineated by elevation nine um is the floodplain. The entice, the entire structure is in the floodplain. Um, right now, it's not, it's not flood compliant. Uh, we're going to raise it up approximately approximately two feet. Uh, the first floor, uh, the first floor right now is a is more or less gravel, but the first floor of the new structure uh will be at ten five. So it will be a foot and a half above the um elevation nine, the floodplain, and we'll be, we will be providing flood vents um in the foundation uh to um. To make it comply with the FEMA regulations. Uh, we're also making it more uh less nonconforming to the rear yard setback. Uh, currently, the rear yard setback is five point six. We're kind of rotating the building and making it um ten point two. The existing footprint is approximately twenty by twenty ones. The existing footprint is approximately twenty by twenty-one's feet, making it about four hundred and twenty square feet total. The rear yard setback, looking at it from another view, so over on the left here, we have the existing non-conformity, which is about twenty-two hundred cubic feet. We're reducing that by about fifteen percent to make it just under nineteen hundred cubic feet. So that's your massing will be reduced. In the facade, the facade is increasing by about twenty-two percent. It's really, as you can see, it's really just a gable end barn right now. We're doing the same gable end with a couple dormers on either side to make it look a little bit more like the building that's there now, just with the some some gable ends on the on, I'm sorry, some dormers on either side of the structure as well. So this is basically what the structure is gonna look like, front and side. And I think that's really about it.
All right, so we have limited jurisdiction here on the nine point eleven. Can you just summarize for us how this meets the criteria?
So, yeah, so the, as I said, the existing structure is non-conforming flood compliant wise. It's four hundred and twenty square feet. So that volume is now in the floodplain, with the proposed structure will be raising the first floor and also providing flood vents to let the floodwaters, instead of, you know, instead of coming up to the fountain, instead of coming up to the structure and going around it now, the hundred-year storm will be able to basically go through the structure and retreat back to the James Brook. And the existing structure is non-flood compliant because the the first floor is about elevation eight, eight, two. We're gonna be raising that to the first floor to elevation ten, five. So we'll be making that, as I said, about a foot and a half above the floodplain.
And you're not increasing the ground coverage significantly?
Nope, we're using the same, the same dimensions of the building that's there.
All right, board members? Questions, comments?
Well, Brendan, on this site plan, right, other than obviously the use, which we talked about, it's not part of our jurisdiction here, but has has the site plan changed since two thousand nineteen? Or I I recall, like, you had a site plan, and then they took away the parking and you know, we made the modifications to has any?
I think the only I think the only change we made was we had one parking space for the guest house when it was a guest house. Now we've proposed two parking spaces over here. This is kind of like the area to the north is kind of like a turnout for those parking spaces. So we provided two parking spaces instead of the one that was there before. But the plans, no, the plans of, I mean, they, you know, they still have the Kavanaugh name on them. We're now with Merrill, so
Yeah.
they really haven't changed much at all, other than that.
I have a question. I'm reading our decision from two thousand nineteen. And it said that this can only be used as a guest house. The board notes that the use as a single-family dwelling is not permitted. So.
Right, in in twenty 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 or twenty twenty-one?
Twenty nineteen. It was twenty nineteen that the decision, but it was being filed in twenty twenty, because a month later, so thirty days.
Right.
And Lee, the pie law changed.
Okay.
And they took the single-family residence jurisdiction from us and gave it to the planning board.
Okay, sorry. Never mind. I just was, I read the old decision and because we had a rather extensive discussion on guest houses at that point in time.
We did.
But Brendan, I guess one other question on the site plan. I do recall, just based on our other decision, right, just with the elevation, both kind of what's been elevated on the site to date and you know, obviously, this will have flood vents, which is a good thing, water to flow through, but there was some concern with the adjacent parcels that the height of the site could create some runoff to their properties. Could you address, you know, kind of what the plan for runoff would be or what?
Yeah, so I mean, right now, we're currently, I mean, you know, we're pulling the building away from the back setback line, you know, going from five feet to over ten feet. So we're able to maybe do some minor grading back here and and swill any runoff that will go down into into the James Brook down to the southern portion of the property. We're really not proposing, we're not proposing really any grading out there at all. So in this, in this, this area down here, which is now gravel, which is gonna be changed to lawn, because we're eliminating these six spaces that are down here now on the southern side of the property. The conservation is making us peel back this gravel drive quite a bit. So all this will be, you know, landscaped lawn area, as well as some mitigation plantings up against the James Brook. So that will help with the runoff issues.
There's not any, like, dry wells or anything of that nature?
No, we're like, we're actually, you know, we're we're reducing the gravel drive area. So you you know, your runoff coefficient for gravel drive is much more than, you know, grass. So you know, this doesn't trigger stormwater permit, or we're not really increasing impervious in any shape, form, or matter.
Okay, anyone else? All right, Montana, is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak?
No comments.
Okay. Well, I will move that we continue this until our next meeting.
Actually, one more question. The the plantings, right, they have the proposed plantings are what you're committing to. They haven't been installed, right?
No, nothing, nothing has done on the site since when we met last met in two thousand nineteen.
Okay.
We did get the the order conditions for conservation would have expired, I think, this month, or last month, but we got an extension from them for another three years. So nothing is, nothing has started on the site as of yet. So the only two permits we had to go back to was for zoning and planning, because those those permits did expire.
Oh, just just one question, Dave. So I just, so they're asking for expansion of the non-conforming use in the section nine eleven, but as it sits now, what's the non-conforming use? Just for clarification.
A single-family home. And I think, John, I think also that we've run across this many times. I think that that non-conforming use language actually means non-conforming structure. I think the use is the wrong word.
Yeah, I just it kind of reads one way. So I just asked the question, right?
Yeah.
Because the uses seem to be conforming.
We always felt with this as a non-conforming structure.
Yeah, okay. This is, that way the planning board can do the next part.
Yeah, hopefully they'll have changed that already or will change it.
Okay.
But what, it was a barn, and the only thing we could allow it to be was a guest house at the time, right?
I think so, yeah.
But the, so I'm clear, right, the use is going to the so the use will go to the planning board. We're just ruling on the
floodplain.
Floodplain portion, right?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, so I move to continue till the December meeting.
Second.
Yeah, all those in favor, David Morris, aye?
Charlie Higgins, aye.
Lee Darcey.
Michael Dickey, aye.
Matt Watkins, aye.
Right. So now we can bring Woody back.
Great, thank you very much. He was there for a second.
Yep.
There it is.
Yeah, Woody, one thing we neglected to do again is assign the decisions before we had the hearings.
Yeah. Hey, Montana, do me a favor. Do us all a favor. I'll try to remember this clearly. Maybe this is a group effort, but we really ought to make these assignments to write the decision ahead of time, so that that person is particularly involved in the hearing as opposed to kind of asleep over in the corner. So hardly a fatal error, but good point. Dave, who do you, I mean, since you just went through the Brendan Sullivan situation, you should communicate with the board in terms of who writes that decision up. I don't want to, I shouldn't get involved in.
Yeah, Dave, I did, I did painfully write the first one, because it had so many different components to it. I could probably whittle it down and.
Yeah, I think this one you can knock down to about two paragraphs.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I think I still have the word doc from when I wrote it, so I'll look back and I can probably take that on.
It's only four years ago.
Yeah.
You know, so. Okay, so we're we're good on that one. Matt's got that one. I think we, the only piece of business, other than maybe some housekeeping, and John, I got a question or two for you, but not relevant to this, is the decision that Mike Dickey wrote on two eighty-five A North Main. If we had a chance to look at it, and Mike, the first comment I had on it was on your second page, you talked about Clark said that he would include the privacy type of fencing in the revised plan. I don't know if we have this or not. The September submission didn't tell me a lot. Maybe it tells us enough. I don't think this is a.
They mentioned in the meeting meeting this evening that they fixed that fence. Do you remember?
Yeah, I know. I haven't made a site visit there since our last hearing, so it was pretty decrepit then. Maybe we could just put some words in such as restoring or double-check with the applicant or applicant's rep.
Okay.
Just to sort of define that. I mean, it doesn't have to be elaborate. I don't think we need you know, kind of drawings and things like that. I think a verbal verbal testimony would be adequate. Don't you think? I mean, it's not. And as a, as a maybe a matter of practice, I would prefer either full names or Mr. or Ms. Somebody using first names, like Woody said this and Charles said that could get very confusing as the years go on.
Okay.
And if we, you know, just always have the last name. I don't care. First name, fine, not for, not first name, but I think it'd just be easier.
Yeah, no, I hear you.
And and on page two, I had, you know, the other two comments. I mean, it was a fine decision. Lee Darcey, B A Associate Member, asked about A seven and A eight. I think we should reference what the pages, I mean, it's it's the probably the proposed plan dated August first. I don't know what page seven and six are about phase two, but if we could just reference the particular document, not just pages, it might be easier to follow.
Sure.
And you know, I don't know, whether comments does the board have in terms of this decision?
I had just written down, Mike, and probably have it to add to your list of documents supplied would just be the new site plan and also that letter from the neighbor should be listed on there.
Yep.
You know.
Yeah, it's I don't like to cause extra expense to the applicants, but really Clark should know how to file an application.
I won't add that, okay?
Is there a way that we can send it back, send the application back, and so that we don't have to ask this? It's about every other meeting, we have to ask somebody to put this on our plan. When Montana gets the plans, can she just say the board isn't going to accept this, so you're gonna have to redo it before?
Oh, you mean add to it or whatever it is, modify the site plan, right? You're talking about neighbors' property.
And the whole application is submitted to look at the site plan and say this, the board's not gonna accept this. So rather than have them have to ask over and over and over and over again and point out the highlighted in the application, can we just say this isn't acceptable? You're gonna have to, you're gonna have to turn in the right one, or we're not gonna have the meeting? Because it's not, the application isn't complete.
Well, that and.
This happened this time, and it happened, I don't know, a few months ago. I mean, and people are always like shocked going.
Well, and they also certify in the application, that those things are shown on the plan, and they're not.
Yes, so.
You know, Montana, given that that you're you're getting your still getting your feet somewhat on the ground, and you sit about six feet away from Cassandra, you might on some of these situations, just because Cassandra also went through a learning curve process. And, you know, after a year, she was quite adept at at saying, look, this isn't gonna fly, but I don't think she picked up on a lot of this stuff on her first month in the job. So you may want to just sort of say, Cassandra, is this in your estimation adequate? Or not? I don't see the full you may or may not, you know, I don't, I don't see the the abutting property in full. I see some little line with a crosshatch. Do you think the board will accept it?
I think that moving forward.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's just a question of what we like, and you can I mean, in a few months from now, you won't even be thinking about this. You'll 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 know automatically whether it it's acceptable or not to the board, but because it isn't written down. Well, I mean, it's written down.
It's written down.
But I think the problem is a lot of engineering firms and architects obviously deal with ten, twenty, thirty different towns, and I'm sure the filing requirements are differ from one to another, so you know, John, you worked in situ and hang them. I mean, what situ it wanted and would accept is, I'm sure not what we want and accept entirely.
Yeah, but they say we can work with that or just get the standard to a minimum. So when they're submitted, i- if not, we can request them to update it.
But Lee makes a very good point. It would save everybody, it would save them time and money if you just said, hey. And I mean, and to Dave's point, I mean, Clark has done this out. He should know. And it's usually no offense to anybody, but it's usually one or two people who are repeating the problems that we have, and they're easily fixed, but I I'm I'm just struck. I mean, I didn't listen in on the other hearing, actually. I left the room, but the the Brook Street, but I mean, we do go back to these prior decisions and do look quite often at site plans and architectural renderings that were submitted. And Jesus, if they're not there, I mean, you know, our memories could play tricks on us, so.
Well, the other situation is, is in a lot of cases, we really need to see where the buddy, abutting property is, how far it is.
Yeah.
Rather than name stuck in a field. I mean, a lot, the reason why people are coming to us is because of density issues and wanting to increase increase building their property out in the setbacks. So I think it's really key that we see where the building is and how far away it is. I mean, in this particular case, for tonight, I mean, they're seventeen feet apart, you know, in some sections and.
Yeah, and it's six or seven or eight feet on either side of the of the lot line. I mean, it's close.
And we really need to be able to see where the buildings are in conjunction to, I mean, even going out there. I mean, I know walking around and going out there, but still, your eyes deceive you, so you really need the measure, you know, you really need to see it. And if they say it's, you know, three hundred yards away, okay, fine, put it three hundred yards away, and then we we can see that it's there. But most of the case, it's not. So that, it's just kind of a pet peeve that you know, I mean, David has read that highlighted section to so many people, because they all said that they 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 don't, they never saw that before. So it just, it just stops the meeting and it just, you know, it interrupts the flow. And also, you you know, it it's not good when people, you know, have waited months for the presentation, and we're like you know, we need this information before we can, you know, have a discussion.
Yeah, it it benefits. Yeah, it, it benefits nobody except of an engineering firm or a lawyer to. Drag these, these hearings out, I mean, I don't, I'm with you, Lee, I mean, I'm sure we all agree, we don't. Enjoy dragging a hearing out and it's, I feel sorry for people that have to. Go through additional expense because somebody didn't provide us with what they could have done first go around.
But this has been years now, cause I think actually Ben put it in the application and. We're now a couple people past that, so we're not, we didn't just stick this in, you know, a couple months ago. So it's, it's couple admin, couple administrators who, so clerks in the past, so.
Okay, well, we haven't.
Checklist right in the application. This is what we need to see.
Is. Yeah, what, what more could we do?
And it's not.
Um, and um. Well, at any rate, okay, um. And Montana, as you get more uh uh. Familiar with this, if, 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 I don't expect you to pick up. Somebody that is uh, says they're applying for a variance and really wants a special permit, but you'll, you'll. Pick up on some of this stuff, you'll be a first line of uh. Uh, of defense, it won't be a hundred percent, but you'll pick up some of this. Uh, as we go forward, cause that was, I, I really got confused as to why they were. Applying for a variance and of course. It turned out they weren't. Um, at any rate, um, we haven't voted, have we on uh? On the special permit for two eighty-five A? I would make a motion to accept the draft with uh. Uh, both the edits I've mentioned and any other uh, you know, non-substantive edits that may. Pop into your heads in the next couple of days uh for to Mike, but I would have vote to um make a motion to accept. The decision as, as written to um. Allow this uh. Uh modification.
Okay.
Moving seconded, what do you check eye?
David McMorrissey.
Uh, Michael Dickey, I.
Okay.
Lee Darcey.
Matt Watkins, I.
Uh, uh, one question.
Yeah.
Is um, should I? Put in the decision that it's contingent upon delivery or should?
No, I would wait.
I, I not mention it and just let Montana hold it?
Yeah, just, just uh know that it, that we're not gonna file it until that comes in.
Okay.
And uh, no, I don't think it's uh, you need to. Say that, because that's gonna, you, you know, you'll end up writing two more paragraphs or something that. Really uh boils down to a sentence, I guess. Um.
Good, Woody.
Yeah.
Don't we have to file that decision within a certain period of time?
We do, once we have made a decision, we have what, John, thirty days, I think?
Thirty days.
So.
Actually, it, it, it could be up to ninety, but that's. That's push, but.
But, but it shouldn't take more than a week, I mean, if they don't get it in in a week, uh.
Yeah.
I'll condition the, the plan on the permit as well, uh, so that, uh. You know, the, the, we'll have two stop gaps that, to get the plan in.
I mean, there's no reason for them not to do it in two days, I mean, for heaven's sakes, you know, I mean, it's. Not rocket science, okay, um, 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 housekeeping, I had. Our uh Z B A twenty twenty-four submittal and meeting dates, oh, I see the, the chart, Montana, that you made up. Um, as always, um. I don't have a plan for next November, so. Right? Looks like I'm free, but um. Does anybody have a known conflict over the next couple of months? Let me put it that way. We have December five. Um, and the meeting dates now going backwards, January ninth and February sixth.
These are gonna, I'll be Zoom meeting, correct?
Yeah, well, yeah, still, apparently it's a, it's a staffing issue, they don't have enough, is that right, uh, John, Montana, whatever? They, they don't have enough staff to allow us to.
Go live, cause when we go live, they want us to do both the virtual and the live meeting, so it is a staffing issue. Um, hopefully. At sometime next year, they'll open that back up.
Okay, so these are all Zooms until we. Till otherwise, but um, I'm okay on those dates, uh, but. Um. If somebody's not and it's a, it's something that you can't break, let us know, I don't see anything frankly, that's uh. Critical, I don't know what, what's in the queue, but in terms of um requiring a quorum, you know, if uh one person missed, would we? You know, be unable to uh hold a hearing or, or render a decision, I don't see anything. Of that order of magnitude coming up, well, I, I don't know what's coming up, but I don't see anything on the. Table. So, yes, Montana, why don't we say? That uh the meeting dates uh and the submittal dates are. Good as far as we know, sitting here tonight.
And obviously we can change these dates like months and years, so I, I try to be pretty aware of holidays. And people going away and like all that stuff, so.
Now, the only thing. You may run into problem is uh November fifth, twenty twenty-four, isn't that the national election?
Yes.
I imagine that's probably going to be. Busy times, um. So, so you may wanna think about a new date there, but uh obviously that's a bridge we don't have to cross right now, but Montana, why don't you? Huddle with whomever. In town hall and figure out. I mean, I, well, we can't meet on an election day, I mean, that's. Not legal as far as my understanding goes. Even if it is Zoom. So there's that one problem, but. Other than that. Um. Okay, uh, your next item of business was review, the approved the September twenty-sixth. Minutes, I looked at them briefly, it was more, more um zone, uh zoning bylaw than anything else.
Yeah.
I didn't um. Have any issues?
No.
I didn't even.
No, it was fine, but um, so I'd make a motion to approve the minutes of uh September twenty-sixth.
Seconded.
Moving seconded, what do you check eye?
David McMorrissey.
Lee Darcey.
Michael Dickey, I.
Okay.
Matt Watkins, I.
Charlie, still here or you go?
Um, disappeared about ten minutes ago.
Oh, okay, well, well, we still have a quorum and that's okay, hey, John, quick question uh to. Um, perennial uh projects, uh, the former Atlantica site and the. John Chavo mixed use building where there's a lot of ro, uh. South Main Street digging, but. Where do those projects stand? They seem to be taking forever, I know there was permitting issues, but.
Yeah, uh, we'll start with one forty-seven South Main, uh, the last two days, they did the hookup both a sewer. And water connection to the street, paid the fee, had a tap of, and cap the road before the uh. Shut off of uh road, road digs, so that was fine, uh, I think next week they probably gotta connect from uh. Inside to the building and tie it in there, uh, it looks like they are anticipating probably. Late January, February opening.
Oh, alright.
So they, they are more, all the work inside, you get, it's all plastered, starting to be painted, they're doing finish trim now. So it's, it's coming along, um, there, again, um. Back over to Atlanta, they uh did get a permit issued, uh, the first uh. Week they started, they were doing some uh. Work with the sewer department, they put in a new grease, grease trap and replaced some other lines and. Things that they take care of that first, and then they're gonna head off the building, the next couple of weeks, they. Work with conservation to get some uh. What they're gonna do, or working with conservation, get what they're gonna do for netting on the, on the water side, other to, uh, just collect the debris. But I think that all work, work itself out, so they're underway and. We'll keep you posted of the first inspection.
Yeah, I, it's, it's been, it's incredible, I mean, under the premise that time is money, uh. You haven't seen any uh plans for a boutique hotel, I keep hearing people who seem to be in the know. Uh.
Yeah, nothing presented.
Area, but I, but, but they don't know, I don't think, I think they're just speculating.
Yeah, nothing presented yet or uh, or, or by us, so.
Okay, now is there anything else as a board we should be? Anticipating that's big as opposed to little?
Um. Uh, let's see, this, um. Yeah, I mean, we did have a permit in for three ninety Chief Justice Bush Highway, the first floor, uh, a golf simulator. Um tavern bar, whatever, uh, so that's kinda.
Where's three ninety? Oh, that's the Stasko's?
Yeah, that's the center building.
Shop.
Yep, the center building, so one unit on the far left hand side, so.
Boy, that's a long.
They're working with the sewer commission.
I, I, I've, I've been by there at night, uh, not, I mean, I don't camp out there, but you, you can see. One or two of these units with the light on and. The rest of it's all black.
Yeah, I wanna say it's probably last I heard about seventy percent. Occupied as far as the apartments. But um.
Amazing.
That's just what I was told from the owner.
Okay.
And um, uh, I'll, still quite a few smaller projects going on there. I think year to date, we've probably had uh. Four hundred and ten. Uh, building permits and then uh.
Wow, wow.
Uh, just other residential building and then some more commercial and other there, um. Permit, so it's still fairly active.
Boy, it's keeping you busy, I mean, that's a lot of just. Sheer number, forget how quickly you're, you could process some of those, I mean, it's.
Yeah, yeah.
Lot of stuff.
Yeah, uh, so as I say, it's still.
Is this picking up? Is that higher than it's been?
Uh, it's about the same as last year, pretty close, uh, with the, with the numbers. Uh, there, there, and again, there has been a little bit of talk with. Again, expanding the other side of. Atlantica, but you know, no, nothing. Beyond top, so.
Yeah. Okay, well. I uh, did all of you attend town meeting? I said John, Dave, Lee. I don't know if I, I didn't see the other Matt and. Mike, but.
I, I did not, but my bride attended.
Oh, that's right, she was checking people in.
That's right, so she uh said she was gonna uh. Represent the family.
Well, I um. Okay, so we have an election coming up on Saturday, I hope everybody gets out and. Does their civic duty.
Oh, yeah.
And actually, the, the ballots are available at town hall too, if anyone wants to vote early, um, they said that as well.
And we even, Tom even did. Um. I must admit, at my. Urging and accessory dwelling unit survey. I kind of almost missed where I was supposed to check off. On the two boxes down below, cause it was mostly text, but. Um. Anyway, so that will go forward, um. It's progressing, but. So frankly, slowly. And Dave, thank you very much, Dave made an important point last night, there were uh two or three attempts at. Making amendments to the zoning bylaws in the floor of town meeting and. Dave's message, as I interpreted it, was regardless of whether you're pro or con, this is not the right forum. For zoning.
I think you helped to.
Yeah. I mean, that was much needed and thank you, I mean, it's. It's kind of axiomatic, but um. Wayne, Wayne, this is almost every meeting.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, what the hell, I mean, you know. Just gotta say, hey, that's Wayne, but um. No, I think. My one dilemma, I will say, is how do we get more public? Participation earlier on some of these bylaw changes? It always seems to be a surprise to two thirds of the people.
Yeah, I don't think we can, I mean, it's pretty much everything that comes up, like town hall. Has been discussed for fifteen years, they had a hundred informational sessions. And people, jeez, I'm, you know, this came up on me all at once. I don't, there's really nothing you can do about it, this ninety percent of the people that show up don't know anything about anything. It's the first time they've heard of it. And really, Woody, I, this is gonna come as a big surprise to you. But I think a lot of citizens. Don't find zoning bylaws to be the most exciting thing.
I'm, I'm devastated, but. It's a harsh, a harsh reality, um, yeah, I know, but it's, it's. Yeah, I know, but the, the corollary. Of that is that um. They misconstrue what's being said or not, or wanna make changes or not, or. Whatever, and um, it's their nickel, our nickel. That's what I'm worried about.
As I hold my uh, my, I just pulled this out of the recycling, uh, my town warrant, uh. It almost the whole entire. Um, warrant, it is um, almost forty something pages was the zoning and. I think that. Not a lot of people spent a lot of time reading the forty pages, I think they read the first twelve pages with the other amendments and then uh. And then. Probably did not closely read this, so.
John, maybe offline sometime, we could talk about, you and I and anybody. Could talk about your experiences in other towns, but that seems to me a forty of, fifty page amendment. Is. You know, is a recipe for, for ignorance, I mean, nobody's gonna go through that, I didn't go through it all, and I, I went to hearings.
I, and even knowing the zoning was confusing for me to look through it, i- it's uh. Yeah, you've got to, you, 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 usually there's a three or four page limit.
We've, we've got a, uh, maybe we could recommend, we don't have any authority, but we could recommend maybe some streamlining and. Things of this sort or, or major changes, I mean.
Woody. Town meeting has to pass the sub, the exact. Language.
Yeah.
Of the bylaws, so you've got to publish the whole thing.
Yeah, I wonder, well, and, and Ju- Judge Judith Cutler did a good job in terms of here are the changes. But it's still a little hard for people to. I mean, she was citing some things that. You know, five or six of us, seven of us know. And, and the rest of them didn't.
Yeah. But the other piece of it is, you know, the advisory board weighs in, planning board weighs in, we weigh in. And I think. I don't remember any. Time. When the town meeting passed something. That the boards that have the expertise recommended or recommended against. Well, you know, people usually defer to the people who actually pay attention.
Yeah. I mean, there were some, maybe some unfortunate. The wording, for instance, on uh. Uh, Wayne Chuck's, Saw Chuck's concern, which was mine originally, which had to do with the um. Um, uh, um, solar charging stations had to be free, it didn't say. Proprietor or anything, it was listed as a primary versus accessory. Use, but it, that didn't. Pop out at anybody. That wasted. About twenty minutes of time that.
It did.
That could have been, anyway, I don't know, maybe John someday. I'll buy you a cup of coffee and you can tell me how other towns do it better.
It might take two cups.
And a shot of whiskey. Okay, well, guys, vote on Saturday, you know how I feel about the vote, but be that as. What?
I got two things. We didn't assign the Stockbridge decision. And.
Oh, good point.
John had a good point on. On nine point one one. Where it talks about. Non-conforming use. And that's not what we're dealing with, we're dealing with non-conforming structures. Did they fix that?
Well. I'm not aware, I don't think they've fixed a lot of stuff like that. They've, they've simply either reordered it or put it in, and then they get defensive when you say, yeah, but this is sort of. Confusing or flawed or inconsistent, um, you know, like that wasn't the objective. John, do you know, are you aware of nine eleven change? That's the three hundred square feet and. Whatever it is.
Uh, well, I, I just, they say, I know it hasn't been changed online yet, um, but I, I know from the last time. Meeting, we just got the paper updates for the. We just got the paper updates for the zoning book earlier this week. So, but I, I still think it has the, the word use. On the nine eleven.
Dave, let's make a, let's make a note of that and, and put it in the hopper, because their substantive, substantive change. Is supposed to come before the town in April, May, whenever that spring meeting is. And their argument has been, this isn't, we're not making substantive change, all we're doing is reorganizing, except we're changing. And I don't mind, I don't object to changing the height of accessory dwelling, units, buildings. But that's a substantive change. I mean, it either, it's either is or isn't substantive change, so they're, they are there. And solar energy is there substantive, now Judge Judith brought that up, but. You know, I mean. Anyway, I think there'll be a time and a place, but we'll have to be careful, because we're the ones that have to administer. All this stuff. And if, and if it's confusing to us, it's confusing to the citizenry, I guarantee you.
I'm just going to send an email to Tom Callahan.
Okay.
Throw it into his court.
Why don't you copy us, can you copy just the board?
Yeah.
Then, then we'll, all, you know, and as we go through, okay. Well, anyway, we've taken a lot of time, I appreciate your patience. But we haven't. What haven't we assigned? Oh, we haven't assigned the Kaisemeyer thing on thirty-four Stockbridge. I'm happy to do it, I mean, I, I can't remember who's, who's in the box, is anybody feeling guilty because they haven't done a decision in a year?
I haven't done a decision in a while, but I'm not feeling guilty.
Oh, you bum.
That was good.
Well, Mike's off the hook.
That's right.
Yep, he's good. I can do that, I don't care. Oh, yeah, put me down, what the hell, I haven't done one of these for a while.
And Woody, I don't think you'd write it until after the next meeting anyway, right?
Oh, yeah, no, I'm not going to try to write it now, I have no idea what they're going to.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's just, it's just knowing that I have to. You know. And actually, I know the Kaisemeyer socially, unfortunately. I'm not sure things look real good for them, but we'll see.
So they don't live on North Main anymore?
They do, I don't know what this, this must be an investment property, maybe for one of their kids, I have no idea, I didn't know they. Until this came before us that they owned anything down there. So, no, I'll, I'll, I'll do it, because we're, we're going to do what's, whatever the right thing is, I don't care. I've made enough enemies that it's. One or two more.
It's a couple more, right?
Yeah, what the heck, there's only so much I can handle anyway bandwidth wise, so. They never speak to me again, well. It's always somebody else, I mean, thought Wayne Satchak. Who gets confused with me on the floor of town hall, I think I'm going to get Danny Evans a new pair of glasses, he's done that twice now. Oh, my, okay, I would make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, what do you check, guy?
David Morrissey.
Lee Darstai.
Mike Dickey, I.
Matt Watkins, I.
Okay, great, we return, see you all December fifth.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.